Good evening, everybody. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome Pastor Nancy Evans with the Community of Church, Community of Christ Church, and she's going to come and lead us in invocation.
You'll bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity to stand before this group of people and say how pleased I am and how proud I am to pronounce your name, to glorify your name in this place. I ask a blessing upon each person that is represented here, their families. I ask, Father, that you would also bless the proceedings of this gathering, this meeting. And may all that is said and done be a reflection of who you are. May we understand that love wins in all issues and all concerns. And it is these things that I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Again, good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, July 6, 2011, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 6, 2011, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond is out of town and excused. Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt is out of town and excused. Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tart?
Here.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item is approval of the meeting agenda. Will the city clerk please call that on?
Next item is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number 11-138.
Okay. We've got a few items that staff would like to ask that we change. I'll let Ken do that, although can you give one of those to Sam and let him do it?
Absolutely. Just one. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we just have a couple of items. First of all, we would like to add an executive session after the meeting of regular business for the purpose of discussing litigation and personnel. And the next matter with respect to the agenda is I would request that the first presentation matter, which involves the moratorium pertaining to the telecommunications operating license fee, be moved from first presentation to item number three under new business.
Any other items to be considered, either by staff or council? Okay. All in favor, please say aye with the amended agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, the next item's public comment. Before I begin, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two general public comments. We also have a public comment regarding the purchase of Hopewell, which is the last item on the agenda.
Okay. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. And if you could, please call the first public comment.
The first public comment comes from Ms. Patty Silva.
My name is Patty Silva at 1685 High Grove Road, High Grove Club Drive, Milton 3003 triple zero four. What else do I have to say? I'm with a couple of organizations, actually, one of them being the Milton Love Project. And I just want to quote, I can't quote what Pastor Nancy just said, but that's the reason I'm here today, is because I love my community. And I'm really worried about one thing, bicyclists today. I've been, my husband rides a bike, and he can't really ride in Milton that much, but that's okay. He can go elsewhere. But I know of a lot of people that do ride in Milton from all over our North Fulton area. What concerns me is this. I think that somehow, I know it's not your responsibility, but I'm wondering if we can educate the public and the bicyclists and our residents all conclusively about what the rules of the road are, what is considerate, and how to take care of one another. I don't think the bicycles are ever going to go away. And I don't know what the rules of the road are, if it's people, walkers, then bikers, then cars. I don't know what the Georgia law is. But I'm really concerned because somebody was killed a couple of days ago in the city of Roswell. And in fact, somebody that's here tonight, it was their friend. I didn't even know that until just now. I also heard that, I don't know if this is true, I haven't been able to verify it with the city yet, but that a biker was injured on Red Road about, within the last week. My concern is, is there a way, I know we don't have a bike lane and all of that, but is there a way that the public safety department could do an outreach to the citizens in some way and to the bikers? And by all means, if the bikers are not obeying the rules of the road, take them. Take them. But I just worry because I've heard more often than not, and I'm talking like, you know, a big percentage of people that tell me that they don't like the bicyclists, they want them to go away, and many of them hope that somebody, God forbid, gets killed. And I've heard that from people's mouths. People that I know that I like, friends, it's just, you know, and I know they don't really mean that, but they're trying to make a point. And so I just, I am not as well-prepared as I'd like to be because my heart's here following it, and I didn't have time to write a whole statement down for you all. But I'm just hoping that there is a way that the citizens of the community, the staff, all of you, council, can embrace this idea, and let's move sooner than later before somebody gets killed on the roads of Milton, Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Travis Allen, and he would like me to read this into the record. He is attending a Historic Preservation Commission meeting that's simultaneously going on. In light of two recent articles in the Milton Herald that have been placed, the Milton Historic Preservation Commission and ordinance is a not-so-positive light. I feel it may be best if questions regarding historic preservation be directed to the Historic Preservation Commission and not city staff, council. Both articles were slightly misleading, and several statements had obviously not been fact-checked by the author. I feel that this may not have been the case if the appropriate parties had been asked. Signed Travis Allen, speaking as a citizen, not as an HPC chair. And our next comment is regarding purchase of Hopewell. Do we want to keep that?
We'll keep that agenda item. Okay, that's all general public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item is approval of the May 16, 2011, regular minutes. This is agenda item number 11-139. Next is approval of the May 25, special called work session minutes. Agenda item number 11-140. Our next item is approval of a Parks and Recreation Event License Agreement between the City of Milton and Eagle Sticks Lacrosse, Inc., to offer a girls' youth lacrosse program. Agenda item number 11-141. Our final consent agenda item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Horticultural Gardens for the embankment restoration project at Bell Memorial Park in the amount of $9,107. This is agenda item number 11-142.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a second on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as just stated.
Second motion.
Okay. Got a motion by councilmember Bailey, second by councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
This is a proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Before I read this proclamation, I want to welcome members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. You know, see Mark Reed out here, Scott Stachowski, Wallace Britton, and Tom Gillums here, our Recreation Program Director at City of Milton's Parks and Recreation Department. I'd like to, as I, I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'd like to ask all of our advisory board members in the Parks Department to come up. Or actually, if you guys want to come up now, I'll step down there and read this proclamation. Okay, this proclamation, we're calling for July Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas, Parks and Recreation facilities and programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Milton, Georgia. And whereas, Parks and Recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity by creating desirable places to live, work, play, and visit, thereby contributing to increased property values, increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to the development, produce habitat for wildlife, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature. And whereas, Parks and Recreation activities and special events provide opportunities for citizens to come together and experience a sense of community and fellowship. And whereas, the City of Milton strives to enhance and preserve the quality of life for Milton residents by providing recreational programs and services, both passive and active in nature, with respect for our city's rural heritage and its natural beauty. And whereas, the City of Milton recognizes all the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Therefore, we, the mayor and city council, hereby proclaim July 2011 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Milton, and encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating and supporting our ongoing Parks and Recreation initiatives, given under our hand and seal the City of Milton, Georgia, on the sixth day of July 2011. I just want to thank you guys and the rest of your board and staff for everything that you guys have done. It's, I'd have to say, if there's one thing that pretty much everybody unanimously agrees on is Parks. And it's kind of neat to, now we've been a city for about five years, and while it's taken longer to do things than we would like, it's kind of neat to see a lot of these programs and structures coming into play, so thanks for all your help. This just pertains to the Bethwell House that we just opened up this recently, and which, to me, is a, is not only a great structure, but a symbol of, you know, people drive by it, even if they don't use it. You see, City of Milton Parks and Recreation, and it, I think it really enhances our community. But we've got certain citizens that I hear from, from day one, that always complained about something, and I won't mention any names, but got a call all excited the other day, and I figured, oh, gosh, from this person, it's going to be a deer, a dead deer, or this, or police stop at somebody, whatever. And they were all excited because they were going to have a birthday party for their spouse, and we were going to rent out the Bethwell House, so they were all excited about it and thought it was really great, so it made me feel good. So if we'll move on to our first presentation.
Approval of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, establishing a moratorium. Actually, we moved this to new business. Cut it right. By motion and vote. So we're moving on to unfinished business. Approval of an ordinance of the city council to authorize Fulton County to conduct election. Agenda item number 11-133. First presentation was at the June 20, 2011, regular council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you a proposed agreement between the City of Milton and Fulton County that will provide for the provision of services by Fulton County for the conducting of the City of Milton general election on November 8 of this year, and the City of Milton general runoff election to be held on December 6 of 2011. If you turn to page two of the agreement, particularly paragraph three, you will see that the cost with respect to the general election shall be $42,746, and the runoff election will be $36,593. This agreement contains the terms of payment, and also provides that, to the extent there is an election challenge, the city attorney will conduct the defense to the extent it implicates what occurred in the City of Milton, and if there is no participation by the City of Milton, then the Fulton County attorney will then be called in to provide the defense with an obligation for reimbursement. We have reviewed this agreement. We have made modification, particularly taking out mutual indemnities that were in there. And, Mr. Mayor, I am very comfortable with it, as for, I would ask the board, or excuse me, the council approval.
Okay. Do we have any, council have any questions for Mr. Gerard? Go ahead, George.
My only question is, is there any way to reduce these costs within our agreements with Fulton County? I know that some of those costs are pretty standard, but that's my only question. Obviously, we've got to go through this process, but as always, the more fiscally responsible we can be, the better.
That's right, and, you know, our charge was not to work on the actual fee component. I think the city manager had gotten that to where he was comfortable. That was about as low as they were going to go, and I believe Fulton was holding firm on that. So to your point, we may look on that at the next go-around and see if we can work anything better out with them, but this is, I think, as well as Chris felt he could do.
And just to address, I was going to comment that the city manager has done that, but, and even if this passes now, you know, hopefully in the future, we can come up with some other options that may be a little more cost-effective. Bill?
Is this contract also on a unit cost basis? I know in some instances in the past, at least at my polling precinct, not all of the clerks or assistant managers showed up. So we were paying for a service that we didn't get in some cases.
Yeah, I believe that there are, if you look on the exhibits, you will see unit costs associated therewith, and I believe, in fact, the agreement provides that the county will furnish to the city a complete statement showing all costs and expenses, so obviously to the extent they can't justify these figures, we will have to pay them all, but this at least sets the ceiling. It certainly does not set the floor.
Guaranteed, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Do I have a motion, a second?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve agenda item 11-133, a second.
Okay, a motion by councilmember Tart, second by councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of an ordinance to amend chapter seven, alcoholic beverages of the City of Milton Code of ordinances to authorize the package sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by certain retail package licensees during certain hours on Sundays, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to authorize a referendum on the package sale of alcoholic beverages on Sundays, and for other lawful purposes. This is agenda item number 11-134. First presentation was at June 20, regular council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you have in front of you a proposed ordinance that is, has been put together consistently with the change in the law that occurred the last session of the General Assembly that will allow us to give to the voters the question of whether we should authorize the sale of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits on Sundays, otherwise known as Sunday sales. This does require, we are following perfectly the statute. The statute simply says the first step is for us to adopt an ordinance by the governing authority, which is this council. Once we adopt this, assuming you do adopt it, it'll then be transferred or submitted to the election superintendent for the state of Georgia, who will then issue the call for the election, and this will be on the ballot in Milton in November. Mr. Mayor, what this would require, or what this would provide, is that with respect to the sales of beer and wine, it would provide that they can, that sales of such can occur on Sundays between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM, an 11-hour period. And then if you see on the bottom of the first page of the ordinance for the sale of distilled spirits, it would contain the same time period, which would be 12:30 PM on Sunday to 11:30 PM on Sundays. This would be a modification to our code in the event that is not effective, in other words, in the event that the electorate does not ratify this, the code section goes away, and obviously, we do not have Sunday sales with no further action being required by the council, and that's pursuant to the statute. So a majority vote in favor of this tonight results in it being submitted to the election superintendent, and it'll be on the ballot. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Do we have, any council members have any questions for Ken or staff on this? Okay. If there are no questions, comments, do I have a motion, a second?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance to amend chapter seven, alcoholic beverages of the City of Milton Code of ordinances to authorize the package sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by certain retail package licensees during certain hours on Sundays, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to authorize a referendum on the package sale of alcoholic beverages on Sundays, and for other lawful purposes. Agenda item number 11-134.
Second. Have a motion by councilmember Lusk?
Alan can have it.
And I believe I heard councilmember Tart, that's the second, so I could make a comment here, but I'm not. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I have just one question.
Sure.
I had a citizen ask about this item, specifically asking about the cost to add this to the ballot. My opinion had always been, this is the most cost-effective time to provide this opportunity to the electorate, but if you could just maybe confirm that, or if we have any numbers, but I believe our earlier discussions obviously surrounded the fact that it was much more cost-effective to do this now versus later.
Absolutely. And I don't think it'll have any effect whatsoever as far as the cost, since we already have an election. But since you raised that, I do want to clarify one thing with respect to the previous agenda item, if you will allow me, Mr. Mayor. This is to councilmember Lusk's question where he asked about the caps on the amount for the general election versus the runoff election, and I believe I said it was the ceiling and not the floor. That is true, but I did want to say that what this does call for is that we submit those full amounts to Fulton County, then they itemize with invoices later, and they will return any excess. So I just wanted to make sure you understood, for purposes of full disclosure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Julie? All right, I got a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, we'll move on to new business.
Our first item is approval of City of Milton's strategic plan, 2012 to 2015. This is agenda item number 11-144. This is discussed at work session of May 9 and June 13. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this is not something that is new to you. This has been before you several times in work sessions and other council meetings as discussion points. This is the culmination, hopefully, of work that has spanned several months, started with the retreat that you all had, has moved into the formulation of the strategic plan. I want to highlight a couple of things that were changed since the last work session, which were takeaways. One is on page number nine, where the bullet now reads, "Establish infrastructure requirements and development standards that are equestrian friendly," and I believe that was something that councilmember Thurmond brought up at the last meeting, although I could be wrong on that, but I do remember that was a council, a council request, as well as a change on page 10, which cites the comprehensive plan, and a bullet that reads, "Avoid density in rural areas and encourage development in areas identified by the comprehensive plan." Those were a couple of modifications. I'm going to tell you how this plan will be used moving forward if it's adopted tonight. The first time we'll have to use this plan and put it into action is with respect to the fiscal year '12 budget that we kicked off, the budget calendar, I can't believe we're already back in that process, it seems like we just ended it, but that kicked off yesterday morning at 10:30 at the staff level to start through the phase, start through the multiple month phase that goes into getting that budget adopted before the end of September. We've allocated an additional week in that budget calendar, which means nothing to you, but means everything does at the staff level, to take the budget this year and tie it specifically to the strategic plan, so you'll see its first use and first reference fairly quickly. The next step will be for department, to put in departmental plans. A lot of that will occur through this budget process, but to put departmental operational plans in place that will lend us success in coming into compliance with the strategic plan. If you have any questions specifically, be happy to answer them. I don't know that we necessarily need to go page by page again, we've had several opportunities to do that, but happy to take any questions if you have any.
Have any questions for Chris?
I don't have any question. I just do have a comment, because I know that the strategic plan, a lot of it has to do with marketing of the city and promotion of the city and that kind of thing. And I think, rather than to assume that the staff is going to take the weight of all of that and build it into our, you know, yearly work plan and budget, I wonder if for our next retreat, or even before then, if we could work as a council also, since we all have our own outreach and our own groups that we send distributions to and whatnot, if we could work on how we can be part of that, one way or the other. For instance, you know, I'm sure there's a marketing portion with communication, communication's an aspect. Rather than to assume that Jason's, Jason and Jason's department are going to bear the burden of all that.
That means Jason.
I'm sure there's a lot that we, that we as a council can do with our respective distribution list, too, and, you know, we can be part of that.
Absolutely. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any communication to a citizen that's a bad communication, so to the extent that the council helps and assists in getting the word out, whatever that word is.
That's my question. Is your point to, whatever the city's communication is, then have individual council members pass that on?
If there's certain soundbites, or if there's certain things that we as a city just to assume that staff is going to have to be the one to do all that, because we can help them do that. And if we're just, I guess, if we're just kind of going at it individually, doing what we want to do about it, then we aren't collectively working together to try to push the same message and help staff pull, push this, these initiatives forward.
I think I understand. Yeah, because messaging on core topics is important, that the message remains consistent. You know, certainly, as you all are elected officials, occasionally, your message might be different on a particular topic than your fellow council member, and we get that. But on things that actually exist to push a, a message that needs to be unified, obviously, our preference would be to all speak from the same voice. So, I don't know, would necessarily sit in here tonight, what that looks like. Let me, you know, wrap our brain around it a little bit and see what that might look like. But I agree with your point in principle, that message points should be consistent.
Or even if it's nothing more than, okay, the staff has identified that, you know, these key things need to be what we push this year to promote the city, you know, and then they need to bring us into that and say, "Council, how can you help push those three things?" With your respective distribution list and meetings and what all you have going on. Otherwise, we're depending on the city's distribution list, which is not all-inclusive.
Yeah, I think what I hear is just that we need to have a consistent message, and that we all need to be part of delivering, hopefully, that very positive message across all of these strategic points. And hopefully, we're doing some of that now, but I hear you ask, and maybe for that just to be something that we just positively promote, maybe more generally.
And maybe that's something, as Councilmember Tarte said, you know, in a retreat or whatever, we, you know, five main points that, that the council as a whole and the city staff want to promote, then that might be something that, as you communicate and individuals communicate, they reinforce those points. But, you know, to Chris's point, too, and I think it's important to, obviously, have one coming from the city information, but also have everyone forward that on to their contacts, too, because, you know, there may be people on that that don't get city communication, so.
Okay. Again?
Anybody else?
No.
All right. Do I have a, actually, I think I had them. Did I have them?
Not yet. I'd be happy to make them.
Do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I've got a motion. I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the City of Milton Strategic Plan, 2012 to 2015, Agenda Item Number 11-144.
Second motion. Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. Now, any discussion? Nothing but that. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous approval. All right, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is approval of the purchase of property at 15690 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004. This is Agenda Item Number 11-145. Mr. Chris Lagerblum, we do have a public comment regarding that. Would you like to hear that first?
Probably let Mr. Lagerblum present it, and then we'll take the public comment before this council discusses it.
Mayor, council, this simply is a ratification of the direction that, over several months, that we came to, as we do, as when we find reason to acquire property. We did close on this property about a week and a half ago. This is a ratification of those documents. The purchase price was $250,000. It's roughly a three-acre parcel at the northwest corner of Hopewell Road and Birmingham Road, and for the assortment of reasons, we felt it was appropriate to, to make this land acquisition that was executed about two weeks ago. And at this point, just to bring you a quick update on that property, and we'll do more in staff reports, we are more in a stabilization phase at this point than we are anything else, making sure that the house doesn't deteriorate and the property doesn't deteriorate any further. We can certainly itemize some of those things that we've done for you, but that's, that's the phase we're in at this point. This is just a ratification of that purchase authorization that you've given.
Okay. Is there any questions from council, first by a public comment? Okay, here's a public comment.
Our comment comes from Mr. Christopher Bluer.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me come speak. My name's Christopher Bluer. I live at 1800 Birmingham Road. It's actually somewhat coincidental that I'm around the corner. I recognize my comments, Senator Tardy, and shame on me for not recognizing that this purchase was in front of you prior to today, or prior to this past week, but again, thank you for letting me come and speak to you. I have to express some disappointment with, with the direction that you decided to take. It's not that I am opposed to our continuing to enhance our parks and facilities, or preserving the historic places that we have here. It's more from the stance that we've just invested a tremendous amount of money, as an example, into Bethwell House, which, Mr. Mayor, you spoke to, which I thought was a very wise investment. But what seems to have occurred, in my opinion, is that we've invested our money into something that we don't have really data. Can we recruit funds? Can we make a success out of purchase such as this, as we, I think we can do and will do ultimately with Bethwell? And my only comment is that, as you look to make enhancements and further purchases in the future, that we do so with financial prudence and with firm data in hand, and not just on hopes and desires of what could be. I am all for being entrepreneurial. I believe in taking risks, either with my own business, with my own money, with my own money, and not necessarily the public investment. So, I just wanted to share with you some thoughts. Again, I recognize the authority, as this has already occurred, but I want to share with you some concerns that I had with this, with a strong hope and desire that we do enhance our facilities in the future, because I strongly believe in parks and rec, whether that is facilities such as this, facilities such as a sports field, an equestrian complex, whatever the case may be, that Milton is, and will continue to be, the great place that we believe it is today. Again, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, do I have a motion in a second?
Well, real quick, before we do that, Chris?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, we followed pretty much the standard mode of operation in acquiring the property, right? And so, we published the, the fact that we were going to be doing this purchase, where it was located, what we negotiated as far as the price goes and stuff like that. Did we get any feedback from the community?
We didn't, no.
Because, you know, I thought it was really interesting, well, Chris's comments were, were important, but it's like flew under everybody's radar. And I, I thought that was sort of odd, that normally, we get some kind of feedback from the community when these kind of things go on. And so, I was just making sure that, you know, it all got published the way it was supposed to.
No, I'd say, I got some positive feedback on it, but I don't know that I heard any, any negative, but certainly, the public comments are, you know, I do appreciate the, the comments and concern.
Okay.
Okay. Do, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the purchase of property at 15690 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, Agenda Item Number 11-145.
Second. Okay. A motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Tarte. Any more discussion?
Can I just, Mayor, I just also wanted to reiterate, I have received a couple of comments, but I do appreciate your comment as well. And I think that what the summation of the comments that I received were that it was a, you know, it's a nice gathering, or will be a nice gathering place with grounds. It has historical significance, and although we didn't necessarily go out and pay for a study to, to see if we would recoup all the cost, I think that in discussions with this council, we felt that we would, especially with the price that we received the property for, we would easily recoup the cost, and it would be a continuing positive place for the city in the future.
And I would just add that I think it's pretty unanimous that we all felt it was a, as Alan says, a positive, but also a irreplaceable. It wasn't something we could come back later, and not only for the, at any cost, be able to replace the oldest structures and old stagecoach in the City of Milton that could be used for the public, and again, for the, you know, hopefully, we'll recoup the cost, but also, it's not something we could have duplicated, so.
Mayor, just a quick point. I think, as we talked about communication, there's also a discussion, or had been, about Jason and the staff putting together a marketing kind of release that gives some of those perspectives in terms of how it can be utilized, some of the input from the Historic Preservation Commission, because of that historic component, as well as from Parks and Rec, as well as some of the mechanisms and ways in which that property would be utilized, kind of within the trail system, as well as adjacency. And another point that wasn't mentioned, but was obviously part of the discussion as well, is that there was an old historic commercial zoning on that property, and this also removes that from an issue for the residential component there down the road, which had been a concern voiced by citizens during the comprehensive land use planning process. So, unfortunately, there may have been some additional information, Chris, that you just didn't have access to, but your points are very valid and obviously appreciated. Hopefully, this additional information that Jason will be helping to get out will provide some of the kind of thought process, kind of from staff and from council, in terms of that decision. So, hopefully, that'll help give you some additional data.
Okay. Got a motion in a second? You want to make a comment?
Just a brief one, and I appreciate Chris Bluer's comment there, and maybe there is, there was a certain lack of communication out here. Maybe it was not as glamorous issue as, say, sanitary sewers or gas stations or something else. But I draw an analogy, and that's with Mansell House in Alpharetta, which is an historic house that was relocated over to Wills Park, and that's become a gem for the City of Alpharetta. The event center, the Alpharetta Convention and Visitors Bureau is very instrumental in promoting that facility over there. It does derive income for the city and for the Mansell House itself. And the discussion that we've had here on council in the past is that we can duplicate something here in Milton, so we believe it does have an economic benefit for the city.
Okay. That, motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. If City Clerk will, please call the next item, which was moved by motion and vote.
Next item is approval of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, establishing a moratorium on the enforcement of the telecommunications operating license fee associated with annual registration for owners and users of telecommunications facilities. This is Agenda Item Number 11-143. Ms. Lynn Tully.
And this is really a joint effort between myself and Ken's office, so Ken, feel free to jump in anytime, since we took it off first reading and put it on to new business tonight. The moratorium basically is to put a hold on this section of the telecommunications ordinance, as it deals with licensing of those towers and those antenna arrays that are located on the towers. Currently, there is a licensing requirement, there is a fee established, but what we have found is that the telecommunications industry is putting together litigation with areas that are similar to ours, specifically Liberty County, under similar ordinance. And because of that, we felt like it would be prudent to see how that litigation was going to kind of pan out. Because it would be tried here in a Georgia court, we would have a good basis then to know whether or not we would prevail in, in similar situations. So, what we are doing is putting in a moratorium on that section only of the telecommunications ordinance, and that moratorium is for nine months or until the completion of that Liberty County case. And Ken, I'm going to ask it, if there's anything else you want to add to this.
Thank you, Lynn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just that, you know, as we watch the Liberty County case unfold, we may get some guidance from an order from the court. We may find that we can better clarify our ordinance to make sure it's consistent with whatever the court decides in that case. But I think that the collective thought of the staff was that if there is litigation on this very issue, this is sort of a case of first impression from the standpoint of this sort of a regulatory enactment, wherein we would be charging basically an annual fee for not only an accounting and an itemization, but also a review to ensure that the towers remain safe, to make sure that we know what's equipment's been installed in the towers, and that if we can have that looked at by a court, we may come back to you at some point once the court rules, and we may, we may say to the council, "Look, don't, let's don't repeal this, but let's make it, let's tweak it to, to address all of the issues that the court had with it." And obviously, I think that gets you the best bang for the buck for the citizens, because that is a, I believe, fiscally responsible expenditure of your resources, and not for us to be the test case with respect to legality of this. That's my thing.
Okay. Any questions?
Thanks, Mayor. So, so, so your fear, then, to keep this going, because we wouldn't be getting any money coming in, correct? All right. So, your fear of not putting a moratorium would, would be named in a lawsuit, or it could potentially be named in a lawsuit?
I, I think that is a reasonable concern, yes. Yes, sir.
Two?
Quick comment. One, I do appreciate the fiscal conservative approach on this. Obviously, we've all been concerned about towers, but because of the Liberty County issue, I think that this does represent a good fiscally responsible approach, all the while balancing that with the ongoing concern over cell towers in our community, because obviously, our residents are concerned about the proliferation of those. I know that we're tracking those other lawsuits carefully, and just appreciate that ongoing update that we've been getting from staff and from your office, Ken. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Just point of order with, since we moved that from first presentation to new business, since it is a moratorium, it is, it's something we can vote on and be comfortable with. Okay. All right. If there's no more questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 11-143.
Second. Okay. A motion by Councilmember Tarte, second by Councilmember Longoria. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We'll actually move on to council reports, and then to staff. Is anything that the council would like to report on?
Just a quick update. I say update. I just wanted to thank staff and with Parks and Recreation Committee members here for the efforts as it relates to the concerts in the park. I've gotten a lot of positive input. I know our first one was unfortunately negatively impacted by rain, but I think the second one showed the continued interest by, and I know I've gotten a lot of very positive comments from citizens throughout Milton, not just from certain areas, and I think that that continues to speak to what we're doing as a staff, but also as a collective community in looking for positive things for all citizens. So, just thanks to the committee for supporting those and to staff, just another very positive, good thing. So, thank you.
Okay. Want to thank Councilmember Lusk for helping out with the praise that the crabapple community held this weekend, and it sounded like it was a good turnout.
I think it's the start of another tradition in town here, and look forward to continuing and expanding next year.
All right, anybody else? Staff reports?
Got a couple tonight. I guess when it's timely, I will notify you of an emergency repair, emergency purchase that we made, oh, about 15 minutes ago.
That kind of emergency.
Yeah. On, on Hambie Road. We had some type of a hole open up on Hambie, Hambie Road today, potentially connected to the stormwater system. Looks as though it'll be fixed tomorrow. Cost of $5,800, $5,800. Some of the requirements when we have emergency purchases is that I notify you that we're doing that. So, there you go. There's that officially out of the way. I do want to publicly, and in front of all, in, in front of you, let you know that the strategic planning team that came together to work on the document that you all approved tonight was a great working team. Several community members were on that team. They're named in the report, and I just want to, you know, officially on the night that you adopted that, say thank you to that team, both internal to those staff members that were on it, as well externally to the citizens that gave of their time, and a lot of it, to get to something that hopefully, we can use as we move forward. So, those were a couple of the housekeeping things I had to do tonight. We do have a, a staff report that comes from our Parks and Rec Advisory Board tonight, so I'm going to ask Mark Reed to come up as the chair of that committee, but I'm going to kind of frame at least the background before I turn it over to Mark, so that you all know what we're talking about tonight. One of the issues that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has taken action on in their committee, and you would see reflected in the minutes that are public at this point, so it's appropriate to bring them to your attention, is they have taken an official position on what our position should be with respect to North Park and non-resident fees. I know that's an issue that has been hotly talked about in the community. Generally, it goes back to the notion that we have this parkland that is completely surrounded by areas in the City of Milton, or completely surrounded by the City of Milton, and it is an area in the City of Alpharetta, and that our residents pay non-resident fees to use the programs at the park. I mean, there's really no way of having a non-resident fee just to show up at the park and play on the playground, but there is non-resident fees, et cetera, charged to the citizens for the purpose of citizens for the purpose of participating in those programs. Many months ago, I reached out to the Alpharetta City Administrator and said, you know, what, we need to sit down at the table, we need to see how we can figure this out, because this is something that is important to our citizens. There's a park that is in the city of Milton, and it just is, and that's all there is to it. And how potentially can we work towards some type of a solution so that people that live across the street who are walking into the park aren't treated as though they're non-residents? We've got a great relationship, so this has absolutely nothing to do with any type of conflict between the two cities, it's just trying to sit down with our heads together to figure out how we can solve the problem. You know, obviously, I took the first position of saying, my guess is there's a revenue generated by these non-resident fees, and in order for the programs to remain whole, you know, there's some, there's some financial component that goes into allowing these non-resident fees to go away, plus there's use on, in the park. I mean, there's wear and tear that is, that is generated because of the additional use. So, you know, trying to take the easy way out, I said, you know, y'all go put your heads together and come tell me what you think that number is reasonably. And I remember that lunch, we left that lunch, and the next thing I know, I got a phone call back, said, tell you what, how about if you put together the number? And make us an offer was basically what it, it was framed at. And, you know, we've done a lot of research at the staff level, as well as the Parks and Rec Advisory Board taking this on as a, as a topic of discussion. I think they're here tonight to explain to you what they think makes sense with respect to that. Obviously, you know, the next step would be to discuss it, maybe, discuss it maybe if we need to in a work session. I don't know that I necessarily need an official council action to notify Alpharetta what the pleasure of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is, if you all are in agreement with it. But I think timing is of the importance here, because anybody could go look at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board minutes and see that they've taken an action, and sooner or later we need to deal with that action. So that's what we're here for tonight. I'll turn it over to Mark, and if I need to tie up any loose ends, I'd be happy to do it, but thanks for sticking around.
Oh, no problem. I don't know how much, like, numerical background you have as far as North Park and city Milton residents using the park. From what I understand from Cindy, it's a little over 60% of city Milton residents are partaking in the, in the programs, namely, the youth football, AYFA, and AYSA softball. And based on...
Just more to confirm that 60% number, that's out of the entire population of people using the park, 60% of Milton residents?
Correct.
Just registered in those programs, because we don't have a way to track them, just use them.
And then...
What is in Milton?
What's that?
Nothing. It is in Milton. That doesn't surprise me at all.
It's an island in Milton, no doubt. So based on Alpharetta's fiscal year 2010 numbers, we don't, we don't have their fiscal year 2011 numbers, and that ended June 30th, 2010, approximately $80,000 of, were, $80,000 of their revenue were out of city fees collected from city of Milton residents. So, so when we discussed this at, at the board level, we felt like, okay, maybe the best way to, to handle this is to, is to make them net neutral, as Chris had said, and make them whole on the 80,000, and then make up for their other concerns, which were, you know, additional wear and tear in the park. If we, if we, if these out-of-city fees went away, their concern is that, you know, there'll be more use in the park and more wear and tear in the park. And so with those concerns and with the other concerns, that there would be additional usage over the course of, say, that fiscal year, over the previous year, because now there won't be any out-of, out-of, out-of-city resident fees, that we would need to pay, we would need to pay them more than 80,000 to make them whole. So what we came up with was just a, a rough number of 50% of the 80,000 on top of that. So 150% of the 80,000, or $120,000, would be what our proposal, or what we recommended to be proposed to Alpharetta. And I think, I mean, to me, I think it's, it's fair. I mean, if you look at, if you look at the revenue that they're getting at the park and, and their expenditures, obviously, mo, most of that revenue is coming from the city of Milton residents. So to me, it seems, this, this seems like a fair proposal to, to take to Alpharetta. The other, the other piece to that was that we felt that in the proposal, we would make it a renewable option, so from a year-to-year basis. So that way, you know, if there's ever a falling out, we could get out of it, but we, the, the other piece to that renewable option would be that we would have a look back to the prior fiscal year and adjust that fee if, if the numbers got out of some sort of threshold, out of, not, I don't say out of whack, but, you know, if, if, if the city of Milton residents that were using the park spiked up to, say, 70% of the residents, or 70% of the users of the park, then we would have to go back and, and calculate that base fee, or what they would have gotten with an out-of, with, with the out-of-city fees. So if it was, it's 80,000 in 2010, you know, if in 2011 it was 85,000, you know, then a year from now, there might be a tweaking of, of the fee that we would pay Alpharetta based on that look back. Chris, do you want to have any comments on that?
Well, yeah, I've, I've got a couple more comments. And I guess the first is, you know, we could do all this work and present something to Alpharetta, and they say no. I mean, let's just, if we're gonna throw it out there, be honest, that's one of the other options. The other thing that I just want to throw out there to you, because this is one of the things that I struggle with a little bit, because it's almost like the mindset of you spend 80,000 to save, or you spend 120 to save 80. And that's a difficult place for me to be. Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of us would spend 120 bucks to save 80. So I also want there to be that discussion to some degree, that, you know, yes, there's additional wear and tear on the park, but I think this needs to be framed in such a way, and I think it truly is such a thing, that there's, there's this notion that you don't, I'm not really sure how you put value on, and that's the sense of what it feels like to be a community in a community park and not an outsider in somebody else's park, right? So I'm not exactly sure what that's valued at, but I think that's very, very critical, because, you know, at, at some point, we're gonna, we, and I'm, this isn't to say I disagree with the recommendation, in fact, I think that this, we, we need to make a recommendation to Alpharetta and see what they take. But I want us to be just ever mindful too and cautious of the fact that this isn't all about dollars and cents. It is about dollars and cents, but it's not all about dollars and cents, because at the end of the day, we have this island in our city that some of our citizens feel like outsiders in, particularly when they try to play recreation sports, or when they, you know, might sign up for other programs, whether it's senior services out there, whether it's stuff. So, you know, I just want to get that out there, because I know that was gonna be, that, that's the first question I asked when I saw it, is, okay, so if our residents' contribution to playing in sports out there is $80,000, why don't we spend $120,000 of their money to save them 80, right? So that's, that's the question where we need to just shore up that gap, I think, and make sure...
You mean, we could just implement a voucher program and have the citizens who pay those fees come to us, and we could pay them off?
I don't like that either, because they're, yeah, that...
No, no, that's, that's what you're implying we, we don't necessarily want to do.
That, that's right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that, I, I think that's terribly difficult to control, I think it sends the wrong message, and it's hard to budget for.
Well, what's the, what's the average fee, outsider fee at, for one of these programs? I mean, what are we really talking about? What, what amount hits a citizen here?
Resident versus non-resident fee?
Do you know that off the top of your head? I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
It's...
Is it like 20 bucks, or is it like 200 bucks?
Is that like double?
It's 100, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it is 50, it's 50%.
The program's fee is, so if it's baseball, and football's 350, it's 50% of 350.
Really?
And the cost of each program varies, AYSA and AYFA vary in their...
That's why a lot of people are complaining, because it makes it very expensive.
Yeah, something we haven't heard about a lot.
We said that, you said that 60% of the city of Milton residents, city, 60% of the people in the football and softball programs are city of Milton residents, how many, how many people is that, or how many of our citizens benefit from those? 60% is just a proportion. I want to know how many citizens benefit from those programs, because if we're, if we're being asked to take $120,000 of taxpayer money, I want to know how many citizens that's benefiting, as opposed to taking that same $120,000 and going out and developing a, a different park or buying new parkland, where we could provide a park to all citizens, and all citizens can go to that park for free, they just can't, I guess, indulge in the programs at the same rate that Alpharetta could.
I don't have that exact number. I do, I do, like, AYFA is like 500 or 600 players, I believe, and...
Is it softball's 800?
Yeah. So, I mean...
So 500 and 600 for the football, and about 800 for the softball? So give or take 60% of those numbers would be, how many citizens would benefit from?
Between 800 and 900.
Okay.
You said 50%. I could have divided 1,400 by 50% real easy, but, yeah, between 800 and 900.
There's probably not any overlap between girls softball and boys' football, but that could be.
Maybe one or two.
And just so I'm clear, and I assume that that $80,000 is just the, the portion that we pay in addition to...
Correct.
It's a portion our citizens pay.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not the total fee, it's just the incremental that they pay as being out of city.
Right. That represents that 50%.
Right, it's the 50%.
I mean, in my opinion, I mean, we don't, we don't, we're not set up to offer youth football and youth softball for, for the residents, for our residents. And, and to do that, we would have to spend big dollars in developing some property and, you know, starting these programs, and this, these, these two programs at North Park are right in our backyard, and it, it just seems to be, to me, it just seems to be a fair thing for the city to do, to offer this alternative for, for our residents, so they don't have to pay these, you know, high out-of-city fees.
Mayor.
Truly.
Thank you, sir. Mark, thank you for, you and the committee's efforts on this. I do believe that it's important to have a proposal to Alpharetta, hopefully a proposal that they'll agree to. I do also believe, and Chris, the point that you made about the intrinsic value of having a cost-neutral approach for citizens and our citizens' kids, I think that's really important. Just go, maybe going back to a few things, obviously, with 60% of those participants, obviously, our citizens are helping to drive those programs, our citizens care about those programs, so I think therefore, we care about those programs for our citizens. The, the 80,000, I mean, that's a hard number. I, I'd like the point about being able to go back and have a, a post view, if you will. I think having an ability to audit those numbers after the fact is going to be important. One thing that struck me just when you were talking was, could we put a more mathematical formula to that audit, rather than to say, we're going to go back and look at it afterwards, is to say, and I think you started down that path, of if in 2010 it was 60%, if in 2011 that number is 70%, then maybe that math needs to be X. The other component of that that I wonder about is if we could get, if we don't yet have it, is the actual hard number tied to the cost to maintain North Park. And obviously, the fields are different for the football fields versus the softball fields. Those costs to maintain may differ between the programs, and so we could probably do a back-of-the-envelope, but I'm wondering if those hard numbers might help. Go ahead.
You, you're right. They, they would help, but it would, from a negotiating standpoint, might hurt us a little bit, because the, the, the direct expenditures that, that they have allocated in North Park are 758,000, and then they have some allocated expenditures, which make it a total of 972,000 in expenses. And so the danger is, they might come back and say, oh, we pay a 60% of this, right?
And obviously, the park is utilized for more than just, I mean, it's got the senior citizens in there, it's got soccer there, I mean, it's got a lot of programs, but you're absolutely right, we surely wouldn't want to take on a higher maintenance cost than what would be allocated with these two programs. So that just, I just wonder, from a data perspective, if there's not some data that would help us to support that differential between the 120 and the 80. And again, I understand the logic, I'm just wondering if there was some data in, in what they provided us that would help us to help support that position, so that's just a thought as you, you know, continue as the committee, to continue to, to think about how best to proceed. On the renewable option, you know, the other thing I think about, the reverse is, if we have more citizens participating, it just demonstrates that more of that, because of the location of the park, that more of our citizens obviously are driving those programs. So in some regards, the higher the percentage of the participants, I don't necessarily know that we want to pay a higher percentage, I mean, because some of those programs...
To get revenue off, the, the, off the base fee, obviously.
Correct. Right. So it's kind of a blended approach. I mean, in some respects, the more Milton citizens that use it, the more it demonstrates that our citizens are really the ones that are driving Alpharetta's programs and effectively keeping some of that base revenue there for Alpharetta.
Correct.
So if nothing else, that, I think, might help us to make the point as we go down that path of negotiation. Obviously, I support AYFA and AYSA on behalf of our citizens, I think it's a really important initiative. My biggest question would just be if we could give probably some more math to the audit process as we think about what we would do in that next year, so that we don't leave that too much of a question.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we would calculate what the, what they would have gotten had we not had it agreed.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, would we necessarily want to pay 100% of that, or would it be on a sliding scale? I don't know the answer.
The idea was to make them net neutral and, and then sweeten it a little bit for...
By helping to offset some of that maintenance cost.
You know, and, and here's one of the issues, is that we're really not in the driver's seat here, because they own a asset, they put a lot of capital dollars into it.
It's their park, absolutely.
So, I get that. Kind of what I'm looking for tonight is just generally the, the fact that, you know, we can continue to talk internal to our organization and never know how they're going to respond.
Right.
But I guess what I'm looking for is, now that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has weighed and deliberated and looked at data, they've come with a recommendation. I'd at least like the, I don't know that I need approval, but at least the general direction, to be able to start these conversations with Alpharetta, I need to throw them something, because at this point, every time we talk, every time we engage their staff, it's, we'll give us something, and then let's start to talk about it.
And we haven't given them anything yet.
So to this, and this is the first opportunity that we've been able to all be together since the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has actually taken an action.
I'll just say, I, I support us putting forward a recommendation to Alpharetta. I think it's important, I appreciate what the staff and working with our committees, specifically Parks and Rec, have done. And then I would just ask, as you guys do that, think about that audit piece and how it is that we can give a more specific formula.
Oh, definitely, yeah, because, like Chris is saying, we're just early on, we haven't thrown anything back to them, and it, you know, if they're receptive, then we can start sharpening the pencil and addressing some of your concerns there.
Yeah. I mean, from my point of view, it, it's difficult to negotiate when, you know, you don't have many options. So to me, it, to do nothing is to accept the fact that Alpharetta realizes that they're going to be charging our citizens more to be in the program, and that's just the way it is. Because like you said, Chris, you guys, you know, we, we could offer them all kinds of solutions, if they don't agree to any of them, that's just where we are. I, I don't necessarily feel the same about, you know, what position we're in, just because now, granted, we don't have many options to offer our citizens, but when you're 60% of a program, you're 60% of the program. And, and so the question I would have is, and I don't know anything about the Alpharetta Parks and Rec Department, are the youth leagues there run out of the Parks and Rec Department, or are they contracted with youth organizations the same way Milton contracts with youth organizations to run these programs? If that's the case, why don't we run the youth programs or get some of our citizens to run the programs, and instead of having a non-resident fee, we give them a resident discount and just flip the whole thing upside... discount and just flip the whole thing upside down? But that would require, you know, somebody stepping forward and generating a, you know, Milton Youth Football League that, you know, runs the same way our baseball program runs at a, uh, Bell Park.
Then it's further one step approved to operate in North Park.
Right. But my point is, if we're the majority of the population that's using the program, we should, they need to recognize that. And, you know, we're good friends with these guys, I'm sure we can, you know, figure out some way to package that all up.
And that's kind of what I'm looking for right now, is just basically the, you know, this is the first time I've actually gotten close enough to having something to call Bob Regus in the morning and say, Bob, we've talked about it and I'm making good on bringing you something. And then we talk from there. But, you know, I'm mindful too that I don't, I wasn't comfortable being in a position where I just grabbed a number and offered it and said, let's see where this ends up. I mean, I want you all to be comfortable with these discussions starting, and I want the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to be comfortable in it as well.
Phil.
Uh, question first. Is the senior center part of this agreement to use of the senior center?
I believe the, the, the clubs that operate out of senior services are funded in a different capacity than AYSA and AYFA, and I just go back to my days there to think about how that center's funded. Um, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't think there's a differential between a, an elderly person from Milton versus Alpharetta, I don't think.
I don't think so.
Historically, there was not any way.
Well, secondly, uh, and I've mulled this over too many in response to what Alan brought up, you know, why pay out a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year if, uh, versus, you know, buying a piece of dirt out there and develop in a park or using it at Birmingham? Well, I guess the issue boils down to the fact that since we were created here, people, one of the primary concerns of the folks in Milton has been creation of the park and, you know, sports programs. The way I look at it, what we're doing here by paying this fee is we're getting an instant ready-made facility available to the folks in, in the city, and we're providing a service that they've been looking for, for the last five years. Um, and I guess the analogy that you can draw in this case is what we're doing right now in, in this scenario is kind of a lease, uh, situation as opposed to, you know, spending a hundred and twenty and buying, developing our own park. It's like leasing a building rather than, than buying a building outright, or we could invest that hundred and twenty right off the bat. That's the way a lot of business is done, leasing. And I think this is probably the most expedient approach to take in providing this service out here with a ready-made park. And I know we're going to be talking about Birmingham and, uh, next year about Providence Park and maybe some other developments around that, too. But that's a lengthy process, it's going to take, it's going to take a while before we're going to develop our own facilities. I think we're fortunate to have that facility right in our own city here. I would hope that Alpharetta would see the, uh, wisdom in, in accepting an offer like this, help defray some of their operating expense and, you know, maintain the relationship that we have here between us.
You know, and the other thing, I, I listened to all these different points, and, and I certainly understand, you know, we're talking about sixty percent and we should have some, some pull there or, or we're a big part of it, but really, the bottom line is, if we spend money as a city, we spend our taxpayers' dollars to do this, it's literally the same thing that residents of Alpharetta have done because their tax money was used to, to pay for the parks and whatnot. So, it's not really like our citizens are paying more, or the city's paying more, it's just, we're chipping in just as those citizens had. So, it is, you know, some people might not think, but it is kind of a fair way to...
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Alan?
I do have a couple more questions. Um, and, and first of all, I, I do agree completely with, with offsetting the cost, the cost to our residents, that makes a lot of sense and some good points have been raised. Um, and I do believe that in order for Alpharetta to accept the deal, we need to sweeten it. Um, and what has been proposed has been forty thousand dollars. Um, and I think that forty thousand, if I heard you right, was due to what might be the anticipated use, the increased use of the park, correct? And, and, and so two of my questions are, have to do with, do the programs that are being offered right now, the football and softball programs, do we have any idea as to the park's capacity? Are they at capacity for those programs? Or, let's say we, let's say we lower it, we give them eighty thousand dollars, we give them forty thousand dollars to sweeten the deal, and is the park, does the park have such capacity that we, that we could really see a lot more Milton residents participate in those programs? Or is the park pretty much at capacity with the programs that they offer and therefore there's really no net new, um, increase in Milton residents? Because, you know, forty thousand dollars is a good portion of what we would be, you know, that's...
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't speak to, I can't speak to football, Scott might be able to speak to it.
And then, and then my second question has to do with not only the, the, um, the capacity of the park with regard to the programs that are offered, but are there minimum percentage of, of, in those programs of Alpharetta residents? Now, I mean, I know you said sixty percent of, of the programs are City of Milton residents, but do they have a, a percentage that is set for what those programs, what they set aside for Alpharetta residents?
Uh, not that I know of. I, I, I remember, I remember a few years ago, we had trouble, my kids had trouble getting on a cross program at Alpharetta because, um, it was full of Alpharetta residents first.
Because we have that here, we have that...
But, um, I don't think that's the case with the AYSA and AYFA, that, which also, I, I left, I said youth football, but also the cheerleading that goes with the football, so...
Let me just kind of jump in here, because, you know, this is just a, a report item, but, uh, and, and there's certainly a lot of details that we would all need and before we would take any action and, and whatnot. But can we just, uh, give our city manager the kind of nod and the go-ahead to, to at least start talking to City of Alpharetta and then, you know, but let's get some stuff going there and then it can all be brought back to the, the council before any decisions are made. Is that, everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
And just as a reminder, the board, our, the Parks and Rec Board unanimously voted to support the city manager in this proposal, so...
Looks like the, uh, city council did too, so...
Mayor?
Thank you.
Matt, just one quick question.
Sure.
It's not a question, slightly different take on capacity, I wrote this question down earlier. With regards to capacity, I know that today, if you're a non-resident, you know, you get a chance to sign up after Alpharetta, and so this is probably something you guys have already contemplated, but when you start those conversations, if that can be the other piece of it, it's not just what capacity is there, but would it be that, that our citizens, along with Alpharetta, got to sign up at the same time? And so that just may be a slightly different something that you guys could contemplate. Okay, so just thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, that's what I'll need to, to start. And this is going to be a, a, obviously it's a negotiation that relies upon us each advocating to mark certain positions that we need to. Uh, I do want to specify as well, just because we are on the record here tonight, that this will either succeed or fail based on the manner in which it's approached in the relationship and the manner in which it is framed to the public. And I say that just to say that I recognize there may be some, um, public information that goes out either tonight or tomorrow with respect to the discussion we had tonight, and I certainly can't control that. Uh, but to the extent that those folks who sit behind me might control that message and would at least allow me the opportunity to talk to Alpharetta in the morning first before playing it out for me in print, that would be appreciated, although they can do what they want to do, so...
I wonder who you might be speaking to?
Have you been online yet, Chris, it's too late?
It's already probably there, and that's fine. Which means I'll probably come and report to you in a week if that didn't go so well.
Thank, thank you, Mark, for everything you and the committee have done, so...
We've got one last report tonight from, uh, one of our twins over there.
Oh, we need a picture, we're at one.
From Carter. Carter's just going to give you that quick update as to the stabilization efforts that we've done at the Hope House. Just, um, as a heads up, in case you see some work going on out there, you'll know what, what is being done.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, we've been working up at the Hope House to start the stabilization efforts on the property. Uh, our crews are currently doing some cleanup, general cleanup on the site. Um, we have gotten the water system back up and running. Uh, we're currently taking bids for general maintenance on the exterior of the structure, replacing some of the siding, flashing, cleaning of the paint and repainting the Also taking bids on repair of the HVA, upstairs HVAC unit and for the removal of a number of trees on the property. We've got two large dead pines that we're going to take off, we've got four smaller pines that have either, are either leaning or growing into some, uh, the larger pines that are in that same little grove. A couple of diseased or damaged, I think they're maple trees around the backside of the property. And then, uh, three of the cedars on the side of the house we're going to take down to allow us to access that side of the house and get it painted and maintained. And it looks like that's about it for right now. That's our current efforts back up at the house, just trying to get it cleaned up and stable.
Cleaned up and hold it place, really, it's over time for this week. One place.
And Carter, before you go too far away, just a quick question. Um, obviously, as a lover of trees, I have to ask the question. Um, I, I obviously understand dead trees, decaying trees, understand that, but as I once had somebody say, that said, well, you know, the tree might die in twenty or thirty years, well, yeah, but I can guarantee it'll die if we cut it down tomorrow. I know that we as a city are very sensitive to the tree ordinance that we put in place to protect our trees. Um, I'll just say that out loud, because any time that we as a city start taking down trees on property that we now own, I just want us to be good stewards of the same ordinances that we expect others to follow. Um, and I realize this is not your singular decision, and I'm assuming that Mark Law and others are looking at those, um, but I, I guarantee I'll hear from people when we start seeing trees come down, and I just want to be able to feel a hundred percent confident that they're either dead or dying, or that they really had to come out. Um, and as an example, these cedars, I'm assuming that they're smaller cedars, not larger cedars?
The cedars are fifteen feet tall, they're right on the left side of the house.
And we couldn't paint the house if they were to remain?
No, and, uh, when they were planted, they're initially planted with, and straps down, and the straps were never removed from the tree, and so they've grown in. Uh, Mark and I have walked the property, um, the, the smaller pine trees that are being taken down are either leaning or they're actually, one, the larger tree next to it has grown around the tree.
Okay.
So, we're going to try and remove it to save the larger tree that's out there.
I guess the point I just wanted to make is that obviously you're being a good steward, I'm sure that we as a staff are being good stewards, and I just encourage us to be good stewards of our own land, including the trees. Thank you.
I think we've done a pretty careful evaluation of the trees, and only those that need to come out are going to be coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carter. Okay, any more staff?
That's all I have.
All right, um, since by, uh, motion and second motion vote, we added an executive session tonight to, uh, talk about, uh, personnel and, um, negotiation. So, I'll ask if there's a motion in the second, adjourned to executive session.
So, I'll move. Second motion.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.[1402.83] That's unanimous.[202.84]
Move to reconvene the regular minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous. Pete, whatever time it is.